Can I get everyone to please stand for the pledge?
I'd like to say.
Sorry, my pledge was late.
This is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder for everyone to turn off their cell phones, please, so we're on vibrate. Audience participation, we give you five minutes to come up to the podium and speak. We just ask that you tell us your name and residence, place of residence. As in town as far as I'm concerned. That being said, can I get a motion to call me to order at seven oh two?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Call in a favor.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was over a month ago here, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make the motion when I was here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, correspondence, Christine.
A draft copy of the meeting minutes from the December ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting has been distributed to the board members for their review. We received notice of two members of the Village of Otisville Volunteer Fire Department for approval at tonight's meeting. The third call history report for November two thousand twenty-four has been completed by the Deputy clerk fire secretary. Bank of New York Melon collateral statement has been received for twelve nine twenty-four, twelve fifteen twenty-four, twelve twenty-three twenty-four, twelve thirty twenty-four, and the month of December. The New York State Department of Health Water Systems Operator Report for December has been received from Superintendent Frank Valentine of New York. A letter was received from the Otisville Fire Company on December eighteenth advising that Antonette Capola had stepped down as president of the company. Melissa Massari has been elected the new president. We have received a notice of rate changes from Charter Communications Spectrum Cable from their cable fees. Two thousand twenty-five tipping rates have been received from the Orange County Department of Public Works. The rate for single stream recycling will remain one hundred and twenty dollars per ton in two thousand twenty-five. And the municipal solid waste and construction debris will increase from one hundred twenty-eight twenty-five to one thirty sixty-five per ton. Which is actually a very small increase compared to the increase over the last couple of years. Not that any increases go from. We were notified that we were awarded a grant through PERMA. I applied back in November for a grant for their remote training. And we were awarded fifty-five inch TV and a laptop as part of the grant. And we've actually received both pieces of the equipment, and I think our TV's still here today, so you'll probably see that at the next meeting.
Good job.
On December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, Mayor Carey and I received a memorandum from Diane Lowen regarding the completion of her quarterly review assignment of the manuals. The trustees and the audience have received copies of the proposed amended schedule of fees, the proposed landlord, the smoke and CO detector affidavit, and the proposed changes to the water law. And that's the end of my list.
Thank you. DPW report, what you got, Ryan?
December two thousand twenty-four, one report, Village's daily usage was thirty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-six. State prison's daily usage was one hundred fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-four. I worked on the local highway and the tolly paperwork in the CHIPS program and the other. Got a call from Robbie Green Saturday, update on the truck. They have everything, put the truck together, and they're gonna start working on it probably the end of this week.
That's great news.
Yeah, we've been keeping up with the weather, but you guys are doing a good job. We had to put on some new cutting edges on the backhoe in truck two. We doing some cold patching this week, on Thursdays we hope, we got a pallet in today. Brian S., one of the guys, he'll be attending to his grade D water license class in March. The class is gonna be starting on the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth of March, and it's gonna be held in the Village of Bay Harbor. So it's gonna be closed. Being for a member of the Water Association's only nine hundred dollars for the class, ready to go. We moved the recycling signs, we thought with the mayor, to make it easier for people to see, to make sure they sign in. Seems to be working. Also Frank, we're gonna be putting an order together with some new signs for the dumpsters. We gotta go over a couple more things, I think enough today too, especially with the recycling one, put on it no bags.
I already had that one.
Just let everybody know, Mike Pitt, our union rep, he retired the first of the year. I've dealt with the new guy, Ray. Can't really pronounce his last name, but he seemed pretty nice, came the other day. He's hoping to leave with the village, the mayor, and Brian later in the next couple of weeks to start our negotiation, so. The only other thing, I went to a highway meeting the other morning. We urged everybody to write our local assemblymen, senators, congressmen, convince the governor to put the DPWs and municipalities into the emergency service category, which will exempt us from this happen, which vehicles over the battery out, electric. Right now, the only ones that are exempt from the regulation is the fire, police, and EMS. She will not put the DPWs into it, because California didn't do it, so we can't do it here. But all the DPWs are asking that, we really encourage her to do it.
Did they give any kind of a, like a template letter or anything for that?
Not yet, they're working on it. The only, one good thing, the DEC did give the DPWs and municipalities a reprieve for two years. We don't have to start doing anything until twenty-seven. That's it.
How do you guys feel about sharing cars with the fire department, you all right with that? Say that sarcastically. You said they were exempt for a bit, so.
Yeah.
Thank you guys, thank you. Just, just to add to something that John and Frank brought up. We've been having some issues with the trash dump off in the back. People are starting to relearn, and I say relearn because they weren't signing in COVID and after, but now they're starting to relearn. So they moved some signs, I think with new signs and maybe a little more education on where it goes where, hopefully it gets better than what it was. And also, you guys are, we're sticking to the timeframe of nine AM to about what time, like two thirty? Which is on the sign and has been on the sign for many years, okay. Hopefully that gets better. Town, Matt, well, Police Department, we'll go with you first, Kirk.
Well, I don't have anything really to report, I just have some stats for you, for the Police Department. Our cases are up ninety-one percent, arrests are up thirty-one percent from two thousand twenty-three. Our calls for service are up one hundred and eight percent. Tickets have increased by fifty-three percent, and unfortunately, accident reports have gone up by forty-five percent.
Just a question, just a question, I'm up, put you in a spot for this, but a question I have for you. I'm looking to get stop signs with the lights in them, that light up with the solar panel on top of them from the county, on Highland going towards the firehouse and from the firehouse coming across the bridge. So not on Main to Highland. Had a conversation with them today, planning on writing a letter this week. Have you or do you know of any accidents that have happened there even since the stop signs have been put in?
I don't believe there's any.
I just think some people don't see the sign or just.
I've gotten many reports from the houses around that people keep running it. I have nowhere to put a car except for sitting at the firehouse, which is quite a distance away. I have nowhere to put a car that I can.
Since it's a county road and county's responsibilities for those signs, that's who put them up. I was told today, earlier today, if I write a letter in response to it, that they would look into it and hopefully. They have them all over the county, I mean, it's, they're pretty noticeable and they work pretty good. I just wanna make sure they're not flashing in someone's house, especially in the outside, but I don't think they would be. I think they're very.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not that bright.
All right, just a thought, okay. Thanks Kirk, Carrie, what do you got?
I don't have a lot, we're currently hiring for a recreation coordinator for the town, it's a part-time position. It's advertised on our Facebook page and our website and on Indeed, we're taking applications until January third. At our last meeting, we had intended to have a public hearing on the HCV law, but there was an issue with the time travel record printing our notice, so that's why we did our February third meeting, and we are, once again revisiting and working out potential drone law.
Okay, thanks Carrie. Fire chief's report. Trustee Latimer and trustee Klaus, both of them are not here today, unfortunately. But as far as the report from the Fire Department, I asked Brian to send me over something that he had, but I'll just say, I know they had their Christmas party, I don't have numbers for everyone who wanna get them, I will share them. But I know they had their Christmas party, so I wanted to thank them for that, or their holiday party, I should say. I also wanna thank them, since we haven't had a meeting since December ninth, for giving us a escort over to Operation Toy Train to include the Mattel Police Department, which is in my notes here, and Otisville DPW. That being said, let's move on over to, and also the only other thing that I have for Brian was, I know he's been working on streetlights. I know a lot of them have been upgraded and repaired, I know we're still waiting for the one that's in the yard back here, I don't think it's on still. And I know that he had requested a new light we talked about down in the parking lot by the hardware store. An army to sell a lot, so I know we're waiting on those two, but as far as streetlights go, to my understanding, just driving around two, they've all been the ones that need to be replaced, I believe have been. You guys agree or disagree with that statement?
The one with Seawolf, which has the piddle holes still.
Yep.
I know that he was, I wanted to put that on the list a while ago, because he was here and went out to take a picture, and that's not been changed.
It's not been, okay.
And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't.
All right, so Seawolf, all right, that's. That's Seawolf in what, Seawolf in?
Well, it's between sixteen and eighteen Seawolf.
Okay. I guess we'll jump into trustee reports, and Diane, we'll start with you, and we'll work our way out down to me, I guess.
ZBA, the members for the next couple of months, since they don't have anything before them, are gonna be reviewing the two most recently approved variances, and that's the old school and the old church, because they're both still ongoing projects, and they wanna be sure that they have, remember what they, what they put in those variances. Still soliciting applications for the vacancy on the ZBA, you know, that's become an issue. They, they can go ahead and meet and do training, which they've done, if they don't have a quorum. But the fact that they have one vacancy and nobody in the alternate positions makes it difficult. So if, I would encourage the board members and the audience to talk to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family. Encourage them that this would be, if they're at all interested in becoming more involved in the community, this is a nice, easy, limited time commitment way to do that. And although it's a five-year appointment, we have never hung anybody for leaving after six months if they found that it just wasn't for them. So if you would, talk it up, because that's usually how we get our members. Community advisory boards, the state and federal prisons try as we may to get back on schedule. The January meeting has been rescheduled at the request of the state facility, since they are the hosts. So that will be on Tuesday, February eighteenth. So if there's anything that needs to be brought up at that meeting, please let us know. Local businesses, I just wanna thank everyone who made an effort to shop locally during the holiday season. The business community notices and are very appreciative of the support. The only other thing I have is about the water law. I did meet with the mayor a week or so ago regarding the proposed amendments. There are three things that we agreed that we were trying to accomplish with this. So those objectives were to provide some relief for the residents who are not currently hooked up. And that's by choice, because there is a name running past their house. To stipulate that going forward, new construction would be required to hook up to the village. And to incorporate into the fee schedule something that we found was in most other communities and we did not have, and that is a system maintenance fee. But we were in agreement that we wanted to incorporate that new fee in such a way that it would not increase anyone's rates at this time. So at the mayor's request, I did forward it to Rory and to the rest of the board members for comment. And that's where we stand with that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you Diane. Lance, what do you have?
Not much at all. Right now, I have a question with John. John, I, I know it's a county, a town roof in front of the old bar. Somebody asked about that pothole that's coming back, is that gonna be our responsibility or it will be their?
Where we hit the water service?
Water service in front of the old bar, and the pothole, sinkhole comes.
That was supposed to be on him.
If you, if you hit it right, you'll feel it. So I mean, I, I have nothing wrong with the spot, but if it's gonna be the county, would you let them know or put them in town? Check into it. Somebody asked.
Thank you.
I don't have nothing right now, but I do have some stuff from out there. The last month, he had one building permit, he also did five inch construction inspection. Seven COs, three violation issues, and no tickets. But he does have a couple of cases going, so the public will know that he working on, this is all for code violation. So he letting everybody know that he's out there, the village letting millions out there, you know. We have a couple cases that will be gone forward, so you guys know about it, could maybe involve DPW movements. We're only gonna move it to safe keep, they're not gonna move it to charge, but we got other stuff violation. Willie got that, anybody have any questions? You got any, Roy?
All right, thanks Lance. I'm just gonna go for, believe it or not, I'm gonna go for Karen Cook down my list. Again, we haven't met since December eighth, so we had Reeds Across America here on the fourteenth of December. I just wanna thank everyone that was involved, it was great to see community people come out, but I just want everyone to know this, that every year that it's here, this is the fourth year that it happened here, anyone from the community that wants to come out and lay reeds, you don't have to be invited, you're more than welcome to just show up and kind of go through the process. And it's pretty neat to see all the involvement that gets put into it. December fifteenth, we did Operation Toy Train. We brought a total of five boxes. I did have, which I didn't grab, they were able to collect throughout for Operation Toy Train with Toys for Tots, forty-one thousand plus toys. Which was kinda neat to see that they had stuffed these train cars up in Port Jerus. Just wanted to thank everyone involved in that, we actually had a pretty neat convoy, if I can call it that, going up there. And I thank everyone that donated toys and brought them into Village Hall, the seniors that donated toys and anyone else that did, I just wanted to thank them for it. Look forward to growing on this next year, with hopefully a stop here in Otisville. December twentieth, Mobile DMV was here. They had a really good turnout in the morning, and then I guess they kinda got a little slow in the afternoon. But they will be back on Friday, January twenty-fourth. I do have it posted online, I do have it, I do have to do the park and the board in town, but I actually have them right here to put, to put up. So the twenty-fourth, they'll be back here. December twenty-first, we did a dedication to Deckers Hill over at the park. Veterans Memorial in the back, I thank everyone that came out. It snowed the day before, which I thought was pretty cool, 'cause they haven't had really snow on the ground. So I thank everyone that came out and suffered the cold, but for those of you that were there, we got to CRD, get on a sled, and come down the hill, which was caught on video and posted on Facebook, but it was, it was good. And it was good to see actually people showing up at the park to slay ride after we were kind of leaving, so that was good. And the stop signs, I already kind of spoke about, so that's really all I have, so moving on down the list. Old business, water law amendment. What do you wanna talk about?
I'll take back off of Diane's comments, I did receive the edits. I think based on my review, it accomplishes the three goals set out that Diane stated, which would be to protect the, not to use the grandfather word, but just for expediting this conversation, the folks that were grandfathered in. It separates that from those that would be coming in, new installations. The only, it's not even, it's a suggestion or just an alternative designation for system maintenance fee would be something along the lines of capital improvements, just, and that might be more easier to, but that's not my area, just it was what I, that was more just, I saw that more replicated in other similar laws than, but it's, it's six and one, half dozen the other, it just, I don't know if that matters to you.
I think it does, I think if we called it a capital improvement fee, we would have to earmark all of that money for capital improvements and put it into a capital improvement fund.
Okay. So whatever's, I, I mean, obviously, I, I wanted to provide the most flexibility, not the restriction, right? So that can be played around with, but that might be semantics, and again, that's more, you tell me that. But otherwise, I think it, I think it clears up the, the hole that was left in the last iteration of it, so. I, I think it would be, I'd be comfortable moving forward on it.
More than comfortable moving forward on it, I think Diane for working on it.
Yeah.
I like the wording. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, 'cause I haven't spoken to all of them about it, but I think at the point that we're at.
It'd just be setting a public hearing, so they would have their opportunity still to be.
Perfect. So I guess we'll set a public hearing right now. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing for the water law amendment as reviewed or as sent out?
I'll make the motion.
Wait, can you hang on one second?
I'm sorry, I was talking, yeah.
So just.
We do just save after you. Rory wants to be.
So we're talking the first week, first meeting in February, is that?
Yeah.
The first meeting in February is gonna be the tenth?
The tenth, yeah.
Is that quite thirty days, or today's the eleventh, do you wanna go to the second one?
It's thirteen.
No, it's the thirteenth, sorry, I was, not two days.
It is, it will be seven, four, two, twenty-one, yeah, it's in excess of thirty days.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna set it for seven o'clock.
Or soon thereafter, could be hurt.
Okay, all right, Lance, I'm gonna like you.
What is that date?
February tenth.
February tenth.
At seven.
Seven o'clock.
We'll do it first, we'll do it at seven o'clock, I'm gonna, um. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but all I'm gonna let you do, Lance, is finish with motion, you would make, like, you'd like to make.
I'll make a motion for the public hearing on February tenth at seven o'clock, twenty twenty-five. For the new water, I guess, applications that we're gonna be doing?
Amendments.
Amendments, okay, sure.
So, so you're changing laws, so it's actually gonna be, so it'll be local law, one of the.
Of, yes.
And Rory, in the, well, let's finish this first, the second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the past, what we have done with these big comprehensive laws is the first section rescinds the previous and then, you know, replaces it with this in its entirety, so people aren't going back and forth. If you want me to draft that up, I can.
Sure, if you wanna, if you wanna give me like what the formula you guys are using the past.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
I'm never gonna turn away a.
Okay.
Free work, right?
I, I, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna.
Don't call it free work.
No, pre-ads, pre-ads, all right, I'm sorry.
I think someone's working their way towards an internship.
All right.
Thank you. No, no, that's all right, that's all right. All right, moving right along, obviously, we have another one here, that's fine. Amendment to the current fee schedule, and this is for Javier's suggestions. So amendments to the current fee schedule for resolution to amend the fees, or to amend the schedule of fees as presented. So the only part of what was presented to us that we are, like, actually type this out and it's.
I typed a read, I retyped it and I highlighted.
The changes, okay. So I really wanna say the only thing we didn't put on this that was kind of suggested was for fees for the windows and inside, yes. Kinda talked to Javier a little bit about it today, just to kind of explain reasoning why, but that is not included in this and could be in the future, but as of right now, we're gonna hold off on that part of it, not part of the suggestion. So this we obviously have to do as a board resolution, but we also have to set, no, we don't have to set a date for this, correct?
We can do it, you can do it right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brian, the other thing that you and I, that I had talked to you about was perhaps if I'm misunderstanding, the seventy-five dollar fee for the change of occupant in commercial.
Yep.
I was interpreting that to mean that it was for a permit, which is, we said, because they have to go to the planning board, the permit wouldn't really be necessary. But it's not, it's an inspection fee, and that certainly is appropriate.
So can I get a motion to, oh, let's see, I'll get on my desk, can I get a motion to amend the current fee schedule to the suggested highlighted sections in what you have in front of you?
So to adopt this one?
To adopt.
Yes, motion to adopt the revised fee schedule as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Diane?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. Affidavit of compliance with multiple smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors required, let's see, for one and two family dwellings.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
At the meeting, I made said that this was going to be an affidavit for a multifamily. And yet, modeled is.
You know, and that's the thing, I spoke to him today, and he said they won't be, it won't be used. So I think, he said this is a, this is a generic form.
So it's a, it's absolutely a formal affidavit.
But we would, I mean, to be, to be.
So it should say for one and two family dwellings at the top.
We don't require any kind of inspections for one-family rentals.
Yeah, and when it was presented to me, admittedly, I was looking at the contents in the document, but, yeah, I would apply to whatever was applicable at this village from a.
So I'll just cross that out.
Right, and then that reflects down to number two, where it says the premises is a one or two family dwelling. Or blah blah blah.
I agree.
So that would be stricken as well?
Or, yeah, stricken, I guess you're just taking out one, one, right? Took that multi-family, doesn't.
Yeah, but it also can hang down.
Go ahead.
Indicating that, that is a condominium or corporate apartment cell.
More cooperative apartments, that's, that's, you could say the premises is a multifamily dwelling. Couldn't you, and just leave it at that?
A multifamily is more than one family.
This is only applicable to, to multi-family?
Yes.
Yes, but I think that's, the quicker you designate it multi-family, the less.
So number two, instead of striking it, we'll just say the premise is a multifamily dwelling.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you parse out what they're trying to identify with all the other descriptions, and you just only have one description, then
Right.
just replace all the other with multi-family.
Period.
The premises is a multifamily dwelling used as a residence.
Yep.
The last part stays.
Used as a residence, you're right.
So then just the top part.
Right.
And then number one also would have, real property. I don't think we have any, there's no, I mean, I guess technically, your, your multifamily could be owned by a LLC, so the cooperative shares could be. I don't really know enough on that end of how, I don't think you'd be hurt by leaving that in.
No, I don't.
We have multifamily.
I think that's.
Right, well, we presume that there's some corporations that are.
Just a suggestion, number three, references subdivision five A of section three seventy-eight, that is correct reference. Four, it should say subdivision five B. Because it's not the whole subdivision that they're referencing.
It's not wrong saying it that way, but it'd be more precise saying B if that's.
Well, I just think we should leave, either leave off the A and the B, or put a, you know what I'm saying?
I saw you saying, if you're saying it.
If you say in five A and one, then you should say.
Aye. I would have to, I matched this up with the, this is a format affidavit, so admittedly, did I go in and text it? Because it might be in multiple sections of five, because usually you would say five A and five B if you're identifying that. If it's definitely only B.
My personal preference in doing things like this is always to be, to put the least in, like to leave out the A and the B. My personal preference in doing things like this is always to be, to put the least in, like to leave out the A and the B, because then if it gets moved around...
So covered.
I'm, I'm good with it being broad, I mean, at the end of the day, it's still covered, you're right.
Okay.
Being more broad on that, for sure. If we were trying to be precise and leave the person to equate this direct information, right?
Right, then you would put it, so then that just means...
Should just take out A, that's right, on, on number three.
And the only other question I had, maybe Frank knows the answer to this. What is, when talking about smoke detectors, what is single station smoke detecting alarm?
I, I think...
Is that like a standalone one?
Does that mean that they're not all, like, when you build a new house, that they're all connected?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I couldn't find it anywhere, single station. So in other words, you don't have to have them all connected.
They're connected individually.
They're connected individually, right.
So if you have smoke specifically in one room, it's gonna tell you, like, like, say as an example, if there was a smoke detector in here, it would say boardroom, it wouldn't, as in a house, sometimes they're all wired up and it would just be smoke, you know, like throughout.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm good with it.
So with all the amendments and all the changes that we just did this... No, no, I'm kidding, okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve all the amendments of the resolution.
Second.
The, the resolution to adopt.
Resolution, okay. Motion to approve a resolution to adopt. A resolution to adopt, as noted with the amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll call aye to call it right now.
Lance?
Aye.
Uh, myself, aye. Okay, moving right along. Quarterly reviews, you guys know what you need to do, well, obviously, only one person here is gonna know what to do, but I'm sure they, the other two that aren't here. Moving right along to new business. Um, quarterly review assignments.
These are the new ones, those are the old ones, we'll leave them later.
Sorry, sorry, thank you. I should've did it that way for the, all right, these are the new ones, you guys know, I'll, I'll say Lance and Diane, since two of you are here, I'm sorry, I should've done it differently. Um, and, uh, we'll let Brian know about his analogs, that's fine. Um, under new business, I know it's not written in here, but, um, did you mention anywhere about, um, let me just see if you have it down here. Christine, did you put anywhere in here about, um, the fire department asking to go away for training?
No, it's not.
So I'm just gonna stick that under new business, we, we have, as a group, I'm not talking about it, okay? Um, last year, uh, around April, uh, I had gone with, uh, one of the fire departments to training in Syracuse for, um, Jinsky. Uh, he is an attorney and happens to be the attorney for the fire company. Um, it was a training, uh, that was up in, I'm trying to think what it was. What was it?
Turning Stone?
Thank you, the casino, Turning Stone. Um, we have six members, which was in your bills for pre-approval, we have six members that would...
Five.
Five, I'm sorry, five, sorry. I'll get to the sixth person in a second. Um, we have five members that, uh, from the fire department that would like to go. Uh, I asked Kate to figure out what the, um, hotel fees would be, what the training would be, which was in there. I don't have it in front of me, but it was there.
I'll get it for you. This is different than the EMT training we were talking?
Yes, this, this is like a weekend training, um...
It was roughly eighteen hundred dollars for registration and eighteen for the, for the hotel.
I will say the difference between last year and now, um, last year, we didn't really budget it in, uh, this year, we did. Um, I would really like to see, and I know two board members aren't here, I would really like to see if any other board members would like to go. Um, they are discussing, um, how they're gonna get there, and one of the conversations was obviously in one of the chief's vehicles, since the chief himself would be going. Um, I think that will come as we know a little more, but this will basically be for the, um, thank you. We were looking at a total of, um, eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for the, let me make sure this is right. This is for the fire and EMT, um, management conference. It's three hundred and seventy-five dollars per person, a little information behind it. Um, the total for, um, let's see what this part is for. I believe this part is for the hotel. Um, we wouldn't be staying at Turning Stone, uh, last year, we kinda stayed at the Hilton, or the Hampton Inn, which is right next door. Um, the total for that was about three ninety-five eighty-two per room. Um, there, the total, there's a total of five people, two of them happen to be couples. So we're looking at a total of one thousand one hundred eighty-seven forty-six. Um, I will add, this was budgeted for, there is plenty of money in their line. Um, again, I wanna put it up to any board members that wanna go, and I will talk to the other two to see if they want to. But, um, as of right now, I just wanted to bring it up and prove for them to go. So, do you guys have, uh, let me open it up to questions first, do you guys have any questions about it?
No, as far as training, I have no problem with training, the, uh, the village is changing, the town is changing, so more training would cover our insurance and, uh, if, 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 that our members are not qualified. So that's a, that's a, that's a yes, and go on.
I wasn't rushing you, Lance.
No, 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 I have enough to go.
Yeah, the only question I had, same as we talked about the other night, um, is that I really would like to see the transportation cost minimized.
Yep.
You know, so if all of them can go in one vehicle, certainly that's ideal. Um, I wouldn't wanna see three vehicles go.
No, 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 I, I, I think if nothing else, if we're talking, I think they're all going to try to go in one vehicle, but since there's five of them in luggage, I don't know...
If they'll be able to, yeah, I, that's...
The, the chief's vehicle's a pretty big vehicle, but unfortunately, the back is not like a regular SUV and it's all the radios and stuff in it, and, um, yeah.
No, I understand that, but as long as they're, they're minimizing it. The other thing, um, that I already told the mayor, is that five people is a lot to send to a single conference. But most of these are new, uh, people in their positions, they're excited, they're enthusiastic, and the more they can learn, the better. So I have no problem approving all five of them to go. Um, what I would wanna make clear to them is that's sort of an unusual circumstance, that we wouldn't expect these same five people to be going next year.
Yep.
That we would send a couple of people to be retrained and then they can come back and train them, so, um, no problem at all.
And the nice part about it is they're, the fire company's attorney happens to be Jinsky, and I know they send updates if new stuff comes up and whatever, okay, so, okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve, um, five, I guess I'll say it this way, can I get a motion to approve, um, the five fire department, uh, personnel to attend a conference out at, uh, Turning Stone? Let me give you the dates, because I didn't mention that, uh, the dates are, okay, I'm not gonna give you the, oh, yes, aye, March twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth.
Do you want us to also approve for one board member to go if they opt to do so?
That's fine, we can do that, we can do it all at once. Yeah, I don't have the fees, but obviously, it would be exactly that, yeah.
To approve, uh, five, the five members from the fire department as well as one board member if they opt to go, provided that you're not going to make that board member share the room with the other person.
Correct.
That's a joke.
Correct.
All right, make a motion.
Thank you, Diane.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lance, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Am I forgetting anyone, anything else under new business? Anything else, moving right along. Motions and resolutions, um, do you feel like reading these?
Sure.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the application of Dave Celia as a member of the Village of Otisville volunteer fire department.
Can I get a motion?
I make my motion to approve Dave Celia as a member of the Village of Otisville volunteer fire department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations, okay, next?
Motion to approve, um, I don't know how to say Benedict's last name, Bene- Benedict Rockdeschel?
Yep.
As a junior member of the Village of Otisville volunteer fire department.
I make my motion to approve Benedict Rockdeschel as a junior member of the Village of Otisville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You didn't happen to talk to him before, uh, okay, all right. Are you sure? Okay.
Board resolution to adopt the attached budget modifications, do you want me to read them?
Yes.
Okay. Contingency account, one nine nine oh four point one point oh, we're decreasing that by four thousand eight hundred dollars. Traffic control account code, three three one oh four point one point oh, increasing that by, um, two thousand three hundred dollars. Parks, account code, seven one one oh four point one point oh, increasing that by five thousand dollars. State aid capital projects, and that's the, uh, the Orange County legislative grant that we got for picket tables.
Oh, that's the five thousand?
Yeah, that's why, how that comes to five thousand, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, account code, three zero nine seven point oh one point zero zero, um, increasing that by twenty-five hundred dollars. State, um, general repairs contractual, five one one oh four point one point zero, decrease by five thousand dollars. And general repairs, personal service, okay, roll, um, account code, five one one zero one point one point zero, increasing that by five thousand dollars.
And a motion that we approved the budget modifications as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and we have to pass our board resolution regarding the two thousand twenty-five village election. By order of the Village of Otisville Board of Trustees, there will be a general election held in the Village of Otisville on Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from six AM until nine PM at Village Hall, sixty-six Highland Avenue, Otisville, New York, one oh nine six three.
Can I get a motion?
I make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Christine, you read that like...
Do you want to fall on that?
She, she read that...
You read that like you were going through it, okay, what, what do we want? Diane?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Uh, myself, aye. Thank you. Uh, audience, anything else? We're good, we're good, okay, audience participation. Anyone from the audience wanna say something, just go up to the podium? Okay, moving right along. Can I get a motion to approve the bills? Um, can you read these, Christine, how much they are? All right, there's a reason why.
There is.
Yeah, I don't have my glasses on.
General, forty-six thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-one cents. Water, sixty-five thousand one hundred fifty dollars and nineteen cents. Fire, seven thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Thank you, I like reading these, I know, but, uh, sorry, thank you, thank you for reading them, can I get a motion?
I make the motion, pay the bill, have it by the court.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Closing comments, Diane?
Um, just to piggyback on what the mayor said, I wanna thank the fire company for invitation to their Christmas party. Unfortunately, a holiday party, um, I wasn't able to attend this year, but I do understand that to people who did go, it was a really good time, so they should be commended for that. And I just wanna make one comment to the knowledge of the people in the audience. Uh, a couple of the things that we did, uh, adopt today with the fee schedule and the changes that are there, I know you have a copy and it's highlighted, but those are five-dollar increases. It's not like anything gigantic was put into it, so that should ease people's minds a little bit, hopefully. And we talked about the fact that we wanted to include the system maintenance fee for water rates in a way that it wouldn't increase people's, um, bills at this point in time. And if it were me sitting there, I'd say, how are you gonna do that? Well, what we did is simply, it's, it's the verbiage, right now, what our rate schedule says, and it will be amended, is that from zero to eight thousand gallons is an eighty-dollar flat fee. Well, it's still gonna cost eighty-dollar flat fee, but the wording now says thirty-dollar water usage fee plus a fifty-dollar system maintenance fee, so it will not increase anyone's bills. That's all I have.
Thank you, Diane, Lance?
Just on the water bills, um, I know somebody might complain with, you go to all bidding, up to the state, basically, we've given our water away for a song, anybody complaining about water, go to other places and see the ways that it... That's it.
Thank you, Lance, I just have a couple of things. One, Wednesday, when I come in, I'll be working with Christine to write a letter to Senator Skofis. Uh, thank you to, um, to John and Frank for getting estimates, we have four roofs, uh, as in the pavilion, uh, the back of this building, the water treatment plant, and where's the fourth one on this? Oh, and, and the, thank you, the Zoll jet. Um, looking to hopefully, um, secure some money, um, and grant money from Senator Skofis on that, so we'll be writing that on Wednesday. Um, we got three estimates, we really only need to get two, but I just wanna make sure they were all kind of on the same page, and they're all over the place. Um, Javier was in today, um, I would just suggest, because I know I get a lot of calls on this, anytime that someone has a question for Javier, we do have his number available. Um, he does get back to people that are obviously leaving message for his, for him or emailing him, but he will not be back in until Tuesday next week, and I only learned that today, so, um, that is for the code enforcement slash building inspector's office. Um, and one other thing, I do have two people that have written, or that have written to our Village of Otisville, uh, Facebook page and looking to volunteer what Diane was talking about. Hopefully, on some ZBA or planning board, um, we'll try ZBA first, um, but, um, I will be reaching out to them also Wednesday when I'm in here for office hours, um, so that's all I have. And that being said, um, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Too early, I make the motion to close the meeting.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Tell me about this.
That was...